Move it by you and see what happens.
I know I reviewed a bunch of the closed session.
They never use it anyway.
Yeah, we did. We did a huge release.
He lives here, I think. What one? I give you mine. Just don't open.
Shouldn't be too bad. Shouldn't be too bad. All right, the time is six thirty, so we're going to call this meeting to order. Madam, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where we should stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam clerk, can we have a roll call, please? Here.
Forsythe?
Yeah.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Here.
Here. That motion carries. Oh, we have a forum, sorry. We can jump on ahead here. Uh, move on to presentation of the prepared agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Moves.
Again, any discussion? Seen on all this in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those nay, any abstentions, that motion carries. Well, then move on to Village Board Public Comment. Anyone wishing to provide a comment on a topic or an agenda item may address the Village Board in person during the public comment and public hearing segments of the Village Board Agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Is there any member of the public today that wishes to address the board? Let the record show none. Uh, we'll continue on to officials and staff reports. So under Mayor, I have a couple of uh, opportunities to recognize um, organizations and people. So first, we want to do a recognition, and so I would like to invite up the Garden Club President, uh, Mr. Renee Up, if you don't mind to come on up. And uh, I don't know if very many people know this about Renee, but Renee is much more than just a Garden Club President. And so we're, I don't know if that cover got blown, but we're actually here to recognize you. Um, Renee is uh, stepping away from the Peer Jury Program after twenty-nine phenomenal years. And this is a fantastic program. I don't think as many people in the community know uh, about that they should. And this is a fantastic program that helps us um, allow youth to have a second chance and to really show that they are really kind-hearted people that are trying to do the right thing, that they just, youth do dumb things sometimes, and they shouldn't ruin their lives because of it. And I think the work that Peer Jury does, not only to empower um, our youth to take a serious look about our criminal justice system and to be involved and pursue careers. I know one is now, you know, serving as a Supreme Court Clerk for a state judge right now and whatnot. Um, but um, you know, it also helps give children in our community a second chance because they, they have a bright future ahead of them, and one, one dumb mistake shouldn't ruin that. So for the twenty-nine years of service, we wanted to recognize you, so I'm going to invite up um, Deputy Chief Beta to, to present you with a plaque and, and give you a little bit of recognition, so.
I just want this whole thing. So um, in honor of your twenty-nine years of service uh, with the Peer Jury Program, the Roselle and I task a police department are proud to present you with this. We thank you so much for everything you did for the, for the program, and we strive to maintain the level of excellence and professionalism you showed over the past twenty-nine years. You're welcome.
Uh, there's nothing for the Garden Club today, so. But we, if you want to say anything, you're more than welcome to at the podium to reflect on it or whatnot. I mean, I will say, you know, as someone who was a member of Peer Jury during your time, it was a phenomenal program, and you made a huge difference on a lot of people's lives, so thank you for all that you did there. So much needed. I don't know if we're going to call it rest because now you're in charge of the, the Garden Club, so you know, that's a whole other thing now, but you know, we appreciate that. Yeah. Well, we'll recognize that coming up, so.
Is that coming up?
Yeah. And then uh, the other thing we want to do is recognize um, a, a big milestone. We don't see this especially in our public service, um, but in our fire department especially, and we want to recognize our firefighter Steve uh, Petches. So Steve, do you want to come on up? So in honor of your thirty years of service to the Village Roselle, which is incredible, uh, we wanted to issue a proclamation to you. So um, so whereas Steve Petches began his service with the Roselle Fire Department in June of nineteen ninety-five, following his father's William Billy Petches' footsteps, and whereas the part-time firefighter program has been an important part of staffing our fire department since the village started providing services in the early nineties, and whereas Steve has resided in the Village Roselle and has given back to the community by serving in a public safety role for over thirty years, and whereas Steve has a strong love for the job and is always willing and able to step in and assist our organization whenever needed, and whereas Steve was most recently recognized with the Award of Merit and the Fire Chief Citation for two significant incidents, and whereas Steve's on, ongoing contributions to both the organization and the fire department are greatly appreciated, we look forward to his continued involvement. I don't know how much more you've got in you, but that's fantastic if we do. Uh, therefore, let it be resolved uh, that we, uh, the Board of Trustees and myself do hereby express our deepest gratitude and appreciation Steve Petches for his thirty years of continuous service in Roselle, serving and protecting this great community. So congratulations, and I'll come around. And if you want, the podium's all yours. You know, this is your opportunity to air any grievances or.
You start when you were five?
Congratulations, though. Very well earned. Um, with that, that is it for my report. Is there any Village Trustees have a report tonight? Seen on Village Clerk? Village Attorney?
No.
Village Administrator? All right, we'll continue on to unfinished business. We have the, and if anyone would like to uh, go celebrate and have merriment elsewhere, that you're more than welcome to, to excuse yourself. We're not offended by any means. Uh, all items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, or non-controversial in nature, and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no discussion of these items unless removed from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda tonight? The record show none. We have presentation approval of the Village Board Minutes of July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Pass an ordinance amending the liquor code for the number of Class I liquor licenses from eight to nine for Cubano Bros., six thirty-two Irving Park Road. Approve the destruction of the verbatim executive session recordings older than eighteen months that can be destroyed per state statute. Adopt a resolution off, approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement by entering the Village Roselle and the Roselle Park District for Founder's Day Festival. Adopt a resolution uh, accepting the Metro Nineteen Department Public Improvements. And then finally, adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a contract between the Village Roselle and, and Godding Electric Company in the amount of eight, thirty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-six cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Oh.
Is there a second? Uh, can we have the roll, please? Aye.
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 And that motion carries. We'll continue on to Development and Engineering Services. Trustee Forsythe?
Thank you, Mayor Polesky. I would like to move to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one for the Plum Grove Road Bridge Rehabilitation Project between the Village of Roselle and Roche Infrastructure for additional work in the amount of thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? Seen on, can we have a roll call, please?
Aye.
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 And that motion carries.
That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. We'll continue on to Administration. Trustee Trejo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to pass an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of and approving the execution of a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of real estate commonly referred to as one twenty-seven East Main Street, Roselle, Illinois, six zero one seven.
Okay. Any discussion on this item?
We just like buying library buildings.
Yes, for those that aren't aware, this was the original library building in Roselle. I think that its adjacency to the uh, library, which we have acquired as part of the Land Stop Agreement, helps us just further the mission of continuing the uh, growth of downtown. But I also think it marks a significant milestone uh, to take a decades-long vacant property and being able to uh, dislodge it so we can actually see something uh, move in there more productive. So I think this is an exciting step for us in the, the next phase of the kind of vision of downtown. Um, and I will say that there's many distressed properties that I would put in the same categories as property, and so it's just because we're buying this doesn't mean we're not working on other properties out there that are maybe less than desirable. The community definitely knows which ones we're talking about, so. Uh, any other comments or questions? Seen on, can we have a roll call, please?
Aye.
Sita Alpenna?
Aye.
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 That motion carries. Uh, Mr. Mayor? Thank you. We have nothing under fire, police, public works, but finance. Trustee Lanisa?
Thank you. I'd, I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable list for July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five in the amount of two million, three hundred fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and five cents.
Okay. Any discussion? Seen on, can we have a roll?
Aye.
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 Aye. That motion carries. We'll continue on to new business, and uh, we have one item, but a very meaty item, and that is our mid-year budget presentation. So we'll have that jointly presented by our Village Administrator, Mr. Valowski, as well as our Finance Director, Mr. Dahl.
Thank you, Mayor.
How are we doing year-to-date?
What's that?
How are we doing year-to-date?
Well, Tom will cover that. All is good. We're on track, stable. All things are good. So really, this is uh, so meeting adjourned, but uh, I do want to take this opportunity, though, from kind of an operational standpoint, just to kind of treat this like state of the organization, if you will. Uh, at the six-month mark for this year is a lot of initiatives that kind of underway. Uh, mo, a lot of them tie back to the budget. So um, first, I'll have Tom present June's Treasurers Report. And then um, I'll cover some operational, just kind of highlights. Uh, we'll then talk, start to transition into capital and really get some direction from you all on uh, project prioritization, so we can continue our work uh, towards presenting the five-year CIP at the end of October. Uh, I'll ask Kristen to make primarily present that, and then kind of come back with you at the end around getting some of those key kind of discussion, direction points from you all. So with that, I will turn it over to Tom.
Uh, so good evening here. Well, Jason kind of took care of that. Everything's fine, unspectacular, stable and on track. But uh, um, but in the packet tonight is the June Treasurers Report, and uh, really, it's for the, not only for the month of June, but the first six months of the year. And as we just said, it's uh, kind of unspectacular. Not all, which is great in my world because not a lot going on. It's every, this, the village is stable and on track. Uh, we have strong reserves, projected surplus, surplus so far. Um, which provides a solid foundation remainder of the year. Up on the, the slide there, I kind of talk about the top six revenues, which are really the the drivers of the general fund. They provide seventy-five percent of our revenues. The only one not up there is property tax. We levied our tax. We'll collect the tax at a hundred percent. Most of the revenues are above budget. There, there's one that I, I note that there's one exception that is not as good is the local use tax, which we've talked about before. A lot of that is sliding to sales tax, and you can see sales tax is above budget so far through the year. Um, ambulance billing and natural gas tax are both below budget, but I believe that's more timing uh, than anything. Uh, and hopefully we'll see that at the end of the year. Also, natural gas tax, uh, we had nothing to go by, uh, because this tax is now on the amount of terms that you use, not the dollar amount of the, the natural gas. So uh, we're, you know, I'll build my models over the years, um, but this first year is a little bit difficult. Vacancies in the general fund provide uh, two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in savings in the salaries line item. Uh, so that drives kind of the the excess or the revenues over expenditures that we're experiencing. And right now, at the end of June, it's six hundred ninety-five thousand revenues over expenditures. Um, Cook County sales tax continues to be delayed. Uh, another article in the current Chicago Business Today, uh, where we may see that Cook County tax bills go out either September first or October first. Luckily for the village, only fifteen percent of Roselle is in County. And we've already received uh, the first installment of the tax bill, so uh, we're not looking for that fifty-five or fifty percent of the, the tax and that other communities that are wholly in Cook County are, are missing out on. Tariff policies continue to be a concern, but um, the local and state economy appears to be holding steady. Again, that's why we're saying so far is so good uh, in the local economy. And finally, um, this is an unusual mid-year budget where we have no recommended major additions to the budget this year and no use of our reserves. Uh, we're right at forty-five percent. Uh, the last three or four years, we've asked to use it to increase our pension contributions or move it to other funds. Uh, but right now, we're right at forty-five percent. Uh, so with that, if anybody has any questions about the Treasurers Report?
Any questions for Tom? Yes.
I may have. But uh, yeah, Cook County property tax.
Any other questions for Tom?
Right.
Thank you so much.
Turn it back over to Jason.
Thank you, Tom. Um, so for the board here, I, I've been working with the management team over the last couple of months, just to kind of as we start to talk about the twenty-twenty-six budget, um, which is what we usually do at mid-year, uh, kind of start to check in with department heads here. You know, the themes of the organization really present state will kind of transition into the preparation of the budget for next year. So some of this is just kind of getting it on your radar, sharing with you what I'm hearing and seeing within the organization. Um, continuing to focus on our workforce planning and optimization, which is really about aligning staffing levels with service needs. I think you'll probably see some recommendations on a lot of these coming up here, either leading, including the budget or leading up uh, to the budget process. Our continual kind of investment in um, utilization of technology and kind of automation to reduce our workload, streamline our administrative processes, that a lot of that is continuing to leverage cloud permit, which the Board approved and staff has been implementing uh, as a tool to, to accomplish a lot of that. Uh, the process improvement kind of ties into the technology piece, trying to improve the consistency and quality of our work. And uh, ultimately, kind of along with the workforce planning optimization, it's about recruiting, retaining quality skilled employees and succession planning for, for uh, future roles. So those are kind of the, the key themes. Uh, here's a little more, just kind of bullet point um, of the status of various initiatives throughout the organization. Most of these you're aware of because you've approved um, the purchases or the contracts. Uh, the ADA Transition Plan was a big one. Performance Evaluation redesign. Uh, coming soon in the fall will be the Civic Plus uh, kind of AI chatbot on our website, as well as a redesign, so that'll launch later this year. You'll get an update from me next board meeting on the Quiet Zone Project. Uh, within Development Engineering Services, this is kind of that first year of that new department. So a lot of it's just kind of continuing to integrate the teams and leveraging cloud permit, and then certainly completing this year's capital projects and um, I realize I'm advancing on my computer, but not up there. Are you doing that for me, Brian? Oh, my God. I'm the last guy who should be talking about technology. Uh, and then Des, it's certainly planning or completing this year's projects and planning for next. Uh, within finances, the Board previously approved eliminating one full-time position and consolidating um, responsibilities into two existing staff and elevating, promoting them up. Uh, and unfortunately, recently, we've had some issues with Munis, our software. Uh, staff is actually evaluating and has been slowly evaluating alternatives to Munis. Um, not surprising, maybe based on our experience. Uh, the, many of the delays of the Cook County Property Tax Bills are tied back to Tyler Technologies, who are the owners of Munis. So there are other government entities having challenges with that uh, software solution as well. Uh, it's a big expense, uh, if we were to pursue a change, but uh, so putting that on your radar, but it will be something staff continues to evaluate. Uh, certainly with public works, the special events, a lot of the load falls on them for setup and takedown, uh, as you've seen throughout the year. Um, the continuing implementation of consolidating streets and divisions into a single divi, or streets and utilities into a that single division um, is on track. And they continue to kind of look at evaluating the technology uh, component to, to improve their operations. Public safety standpoint, the fire department, all new, everyone's in a new position this year. Uh, so that's a lot of change, just getting acclimated with one another. Um, in, in addition to that's the implementation of the in-house civilian EMS program. Uh, I would say initially, we kind of inherited some of the challenges that our contractor had when it came to staffing. Uh, I believe we're fully staffed uh, currently. Uh, we may have one person out on an injury, uh, but all positions are full. Uh, so that's good, but it's eight months into the year, so uh, still evaluating that program, but certainly things are on track and from a cost savings perspective are still there. Um, the staffing within the career side uh, is kind of where our pain point is currently within fire. Uh, on the upside, and police, we're fully staffed. Um, over the last, you know, couple of years passed, patrol was our pain point, and firefighters maybe was more fully staffed. Uh, but with, so we should have fully staffed, sworn, police and fire uh, by the end of this year. Uh, knowing the lead time and how long it can take up to six months to get someone. Um, that is not that big of an issue to me compared to maybe where it was a couple of years ago and uh, and the, you know, long duration of time kind of being understaffed. Uh, within the police department, they've completed the implementation of the license plate reader, new system on the CSO vehicle. Uh, created some new programs uh, and have been able to train up internal staff and, and uh, provide some training uh, in-house versus having to, to send folks out of house. And then they're also preparing for their um, assessment there with the uh, Illinois Chiefs Association. So that's a, a big accomplishment and a lot of work for staff. So that's just really key highlights. I want to hit kind of every department. I'll pause there to see if there's any questions before we get into the capital kind of discussion.
Any questions for Jason on the staff mid-year update? Trustee Donkey?
I'd just ask Jason just, people want to know. When you're low on staff, how does that really affect your service? You have a measurement that says we're not able to do this because we're lacking staff. And the other part of that question would be, does IT help you to, to lower staff and still be able to do the same amount of work?
Well, I, I guess low on staff, meaning like vacancies in police and fire, just, you know, it's, it's a broad question, but I can't necessarily give you a broad answer because it's very specific.
Oh, we seem to be doing all right with less staff. And, and that may not even be a true statement. So how, how can you?
Yeah, I mean, overall, I'm not sure we have less staff, right? I mean, we've, from finance, we consolidated there, and I think we're able to show that our performance is continues to, to meet expectations. Um, I think some of the, it's getting to special projects, it's getting ahead of some work. I think it's sometimes with staffing, you can't seem to get caught up on stuff. Uh, it for public safety, it's the overtime, it's the same amount of work is there, but less people if you have vacancies, and then they're shouldering. So you could deal with burnout or injuries or other issues, you know, quality of work kind of situations. Um, technology is certainly there to me to kind of support staff. I don't know if we're at that point where it replaces staff necessarily, right? I think it's just continually to meet the expectations of the community and the board, and I think those continue to elevate and continue to get pushed higher and higher. We want to do more stuff, put on more events, have quicker turnarounds, you know, improve satisfaction, all these things. It kind of takes investments in the people and your processes. Um, so I can't give you a really, I hopefully that kind of addresses.
That's nice. You touched points that inquiring minds want to know.
Sure.
And, and I would just add to that, when we do our annual kind of, we'll call it a, a tour of Roselle, for lack of a better word, where we speak with each department, I think specifically in those police, fire, and public works, when we have vacancies there, we get burnt out with staff. It takes a toll on them mentally. And that can lead, like Jason said, to mistakes or other issues, but it also can kind of erode that kind of workplace environment that I think keeps employees happy and engaged to want to be here. Um, and I think when it comes to technology, it can absolutely be a thing we can leverage, but we would need to make a massive investment on the front end in surplus of any savings we would get in the short term that would build off on a long-term kind of gain if it works. And I think that's the biggest risk with technology streamlining our workforce, is what we do is very unique and different. If we mess up, it's not shareholders we have to respond to, it, it's our residents, and that creates a higher risk for that to um, to fully realize, and because that it makes that, I think, exponentially more expensive to do because it needs to be not ninety percent, right? It needs to be ninety-nine point nine percent, right? So. Good questions, though. Any other questions? I automated my day job, so, anyway.
So moving along then to capital uh, improvement plan priorities. So this is really kind of the main uh, focus for tonight's meeting and getting the direction from you all. So kind of want to lead with the items we're going to seek direction on. We'll kind of go through the nuts and bolts of it, and then we'll come back and get that direction from you, hopefully. So uh, you've heard kind of me provide you some updates over time regarding what we're calling a Northwest Triangle Project, which is the northwest uh, portion or area from uh, Irving and Roselle. It's Thorndale, Glen Lake, and um, Hatendorf uh, area, uh, and some major kind of infrastructure improvements that are needed up there. Um, the wastewater and water facility plans, those are plans we tr- traditionally do every five years. We're kind of looking to initiate that now um, so that we have uh, those plans in hand uh, in time for um, the twenty-twenty-seven budget as that, as these plans take, uh, can take up to a kind of a year to complete. Uh, the SIP, the Street Improvement Program, that funding level, we have updated kind of data around the overall pavement condition uh, of the community and um, what's necessary to bring that up to a acceptable condition level. Um, we're also um, trying to position ourselves for outs, additional outside funding. Uh, that would be the STP, the Surface Transportation uh, program, projects that are coordinated through DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference. And we need to submit our intent kind of by the end of this year. But it's a, a process that will require us to get an engineer on board and start uh, kind of preparing that information now, so we can um, submit that in time. Uh, also then, looking to pause uh, the fire uh, police and fire building improvements that were in this year's budget, so that we can kind of take a step back and start to take a bit of a comprehensive review of our facilities. Uh, that's kind of come out of some recent conversations with, with staff and particularly fire. Uh, and I think what the department may need building-wise, um, I, you, I think some discussions will be had in the future if we can get kind of this study going and really have an idea of what we need today and, and down the line for adequate facilities. And then uh, kind of the stormwater piece is, right now, we have no identified funding for construction. It's kind of all in the design. So kind of, again, looking at all of those things and getting your direction on prioritization. Um, some of the priorities and kind of challenges that we've been um, kind of addressing. Certainly, the priorities are continuing to address the wastewater treatment plant improvements through the IPA mandates, as well as lead service line replacements. Uh, based on the condition study of the roads, we need to put more funding towards it if you want to kind of bend the curve and get that going um, towards the favorable condition instead of kind of continuing to deteriorate. Um, the stormwater issues that we have throughout the community. And then always that balance, at least from my perspective, funding operations with infrastructure and balancing the people and the projects. And, and so from a challenges standpoint, a little more kind of clarity, maybe, that's come along with some of the federal funding. It seems like major federal funding for stormwater is not going to be available um, based on what's happening in Washington DC. The IEP A low-interest loans, it's unclear if we'll have those for the Devlin Project. Uh, we're continuing to advance that project in anticipation that loans will become available. Um, but, so we don't have a definitive no, but we also don't have a definitive yes on the Devlin uh, project. And then with the Board and the Home Rule um, initiative, you had your CIS-imposed cap, which comes into play starting next year and many years after that. And I think you'll see your your infrastructure needs are present and are increasing in cost and being able to fund those with also having that cap uh, is a challenge. We continue to try to seek grant funding where we can. That's why we've kind of brought forth you some opportunities that we could seek outside funding. And then with a lot of these projects, it's a lot of money paid out over a short amount of time, a construction season. But our way our revenues come in, they come in incrementally every month. So you kind of have a large upfront expense, but that revenue may not be there. So that's where borrowing and some other options have to come into play um, just due to the timing of kind of expenses and revenue collection. I'll just remind the Board again of its success in getting over seven and a half million dollars in grants uh, over the last four years and the projects that those are going towards. Uh, we have certainly leveraged outside money for other stuff, too. If you talk Quiet Zone and some other projects, there's outside money coming in, being invested uh, in our infrastructure. Um, so that's just kind of a, a reminder there. And that we hope to continue to, to grow that number as we have significant amount of projects we've submitted to the State of Illinois to try to seek four hundred million dollars in, in grants there. Uh, and a couple of other. And a couple of other opportunities that we're pursuing, both that Kristen can cover. And then finally, kind of reminding you the buckets of our projects, where the funding really comes from with the C I S really goes towards water and wastewater improvements there. The Home Rule Sales Tax going towards the wastewater, kind of in the outer, you know, in a cup, in a couple of years for Boderman and Devlin. Right now, we don't have any low interest loans to repay yet. So we have a little flexibility with Home Rule Sales Tax right now because it's not dedicated to any projects really in the coming years. Street program, again, Home Rule, you got your utility tax and then your local motor fuel tax. And with stormwater, again, kind of Home Rule Sales Tax. So you see a lot of projects that we show Home Rule Sales Tax going towards. Unfortunately, there's not enough Home Rule Sales Tax to fund them all. So with that, I will ask Kristen to kind of give an update overall on some of the status of projects and kind of walk through some of the other components and I'll come back and talk to you in a bit.
All right.
So then any questions?
Any questions for Jason?
Thank you.
All right. I'm just going to say Kristen didn't get a title card on this one and I think she, she probably deserved one, so, but come on up.
All right. So as Jason mentioned, you know, there's a lot of infrastructure needs and a lot of ongoing projects, things like that. But as part of our ongoing evaluation of capital needs, we've continued to identify these three items, especially, can you hear me?
Yes, but it feels a little bit odd. So I don't know, maybe get a little closer and we'll see.
Okay. We've continued to identify, there it is, the, some, you know, ongoing themes related to utilities. We have identified up to $5.1 million in improvements that are needed in Northwest Roselle. Some of the oldest infrastructure is located west of Roselle and north of Irving, mostly between Glen Lake and Hatendorf. There have been several recent water main breaks in the area, but we'll discuss some of those options later. But just kind of touching on that, this is something that's really popped up as a priority. Additional revenue is needed for water and sewer capital projects in general. C I S revenue funds this, but a rate increase would help fund additional improvements. And then finally, as Jason mentioned, the Devlin wastewater treatment plant loans repayment needs to start for those in 2029. Is that supposed to be Boderman? Or is that Devlin? That's Devlin, okay, sorry. So this will put a significant impact on the capital improvement project fund in general and would impact streets and stormwater as well. Currently, there are three projects that staff have identified that we could use federal or other outside funding for to maximize our village resources. First one is Roselle Road pedestrian improvements. The design engineering will be completed this year and next year. And as Jason mentioned, we do have a Cook County grant for a portion of that design engineering. However, the $3 million construction costs, we do not have funding for at this point. We continue to seek federal funding and other funding opportunities through I T A P and state funding sources. But at this point, we do not have anything. It is eligible for part of partially T I F funding, so there is that. Bryn Mawr Avenue Street Improvements. We completed a study of the pedestrian crossings by Lake Park this year. Those resulted in improvements that could be done separately or could be done as part of a larger project, which would be the resurfacing of Bryn Mawr from lake to West End. And that would be roughly a one and a quarter million dollar project. But we could do, we could, this is eligible for Surface Transportation Program Grant, which is a federal grant administered by D M M C. So that is something that we could pursue at a future date, which then reduces the village share to less than a million dollars. Lawrence and Plum Grove Improvements. A traffic study is budgeted for this year. However, what we are proposing would be to start the design engineering for the project to make it federally eligible for funding. But that would also incorporate into it that traffic study as well. So by approving, starting that process, we are also completing this traffic study still. We anticipate the project would score well in terms of grant funding due to the heavy pedestrian impact, both Metro 19 and its connection to the two prior I T A P grants that we have. Again, street resurfacing could be funded through S T P grant. And then the village share would just be the engineering and then 30% of the construction costs. Questions there before I get into the street? So in general, we've continued to identify the need for additional funding dedicated to our street improvement program. The 2024 payment evaluation that we had showed that the roads have declined from 2019 despite increasing funding. This is due to the fact that the number of streets that we have that were built in the eighties and early nineties have continued to decline. And we're just not keeping up with that rate of decline. So as we mentioned previously, we need additional funding. The chart that's here kind of shows based on the funding level, what that pavement condition number hits. The scale is zero to 100 and 100 is obviously a brand new street. So you want your streets to be at 100, but that's not feasible. So 66 to 68 is kind of that sweet spot that you want to hit as your minimum pavement condition number. Right now, we're a little less than a 63. So we're definitely below that number. We put together these different scenarios to show where we're at. We currently have about a million and a quarter a year, which gets us about 2.3 miles of streets. If we increase to two and a quarter, we would hit 4.3 miles a year. And we would hit the goal of that 66 by 2029. So that's basically our five-year plan. Stormwater projects. So as you know, we've been working on stormwater projects in three major basins, the Devlin Basin, Seasons Four and Meacham Creek. Our stormwater programs are supported by utility tax, but there is no dedicated funding source for any major projects. Currently, the design and permitting of these projects is included in the five-year C I P, but the construction costs have not been. So in 2025, we're working on the design and permitting of Seasons Four, the South Devlin Project, which is everything south of Walnut, and then Meacham Creek West, which is the Heather Green Pond. Currently, the Meacham Creek along Granville and the Devlin North and Meacham Creek Lawrence are in out years for design. But you can see that the construction costs that we don't have funding for are all in the multimillion dollar range. So the next large capital improvement, as Jason mentioned, is the Triangle area. We'll get into a little more detail on the next page, but this table basically shows the options and overall costs associated with completing this work. But we can flip to the next slide and we can talk about what needs to be done and why. So in January of 2025, five water main breaks occurred in the area of Glen Lake, Hatendorf and Thorndale within a two-day period. While the area was already identified as needing roadway resurfacing and lead service line replacement, this brought attention to the condition of the water main and the fact that portions of it are undersized. So why do we need to prioritize this now? Well, the existing water main was constructed around 1924 and 25% of the main is undersized, meaning it's four inch main. Typically, main we put in today is a minimum six inch, usually an eight inch. So this is definitely smaller than that, which causes issues with pressure and water hammer when the main either breaks or gets turned on and off. This map here kind of shows the age of the main. Everything brown there is constructed in 1920 to 1929. Next slide. This slide shows the age of the sanitary sewer. This was constructed in 1927 and was lined in 2005. So structural liners typically last 20 to 30 years. So we're reaching the life expectancy of that as well. And again, the condition of the roadway and the history of water main breaks have triggered a need to do significant work in this area. So quick run through our options. Option one is to replace the water main. And well, all, all options include replacing the water main and replacing the service line from the main to the B box. So this would also include replacing approximately 59 lead service lines. So we're helping two programs out by doing this. So that's included in all programs at a minimum. Option one does nothing with the sanitary sewer, which may create a need to open the road either to repair services or to repair or replace the main within the next five years. And then it also includes the resurfacing of the roadway. Option two, in addition to the water main, it replaces the sanitary main as well as the sanitary service lines that run from the main to the property line. We would not go beyond the property line, but we would install a clean out at the property line. This is really the most cost-effective method. The sanitary sewer service line would be the villa, or the homeowner's responsibility after the construction, just like it is today. But this would help us avoid issues with failing sanitary services, private sanitary services due to their age after we have resurfaced the roadway. Then we would end up reconstructing the roadway just due to the volume of excavation that would occur. Option three would be to replace the sanitary services only. So keep the main in place, but replace from the main to the property line again. This would create additional holes in our existing main if we were not able to reuse the existing taps, which is highly likely. And that would just result in roadway resurfacing. And option four would be to only line the private side. But again, we're not sure the feasibility of that. We'd have to televise each individual service and technically that is private property. So determining how that would play out if we were to damage it or something, we'd have to figure that out. But again, we don't know in detail the condition or the material for each property.
Any questions for one?
Can you give me your best estimate on what it costs us every time we have to fix one of those breaks? Rough number?
$10,000, yeah.
Thank you.
And then when you say, I know only option two had complete, sorry, complete reconstruction of the road versus resurfacing, what's the price difference from a resurfacing versus a reconstruction? Obviously, it's more because it.
Resurfacing of those roadways would be about $200,000, whereas reconstruction would be half a million. So it's about $300,000 difference.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Trusty Donkey?
Same line of thought. What goes bad on these roads that were built in 1980? Is it the substructure that really needs to be redone? Because otherwise they just grind asphalt out and put new asphalt down, right?
So you're talking the, the, just in general? Yeah, that's all we would be doing on the streets from the eighties as well.
You said it deteriorated a lot since the eighties or nineties.
Yeah, and they've been resurfaced in between here in 1980, but.
The substructure that's getting worse because they, they put new blacktop on and you get, how many years do you get on blacktop? 15?
15 to 20 to 25. It kind of depends on how many winters you.
They start to hit her after a while too.
Yeah.
Hit her crack on the edges.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of it becomes related more to the condition of failing curb or drainage issues underneath the pavement and patches.
So you know more about this than I do. Is there anything wrong with the asphalt that's used in Illinois? I mean, I've heard that it's not, I mean, we go to the lowest bidder and do they like give us a cheaper form of asphalt than, than we should be getting?
I have not heard that Illinois asphalt is any different than any other.
Seems like we got a lot more potholes than a lot of the other states, but I'm just, just wondering.
We just don't fund our streets as well. I mean, generally speaking, as we probably should, is maybe it, but.
But you're saying 15 to 20 years is, that's a decent amount of time.
With the weather that we have here and the salt usage, things like that, pre-slaw.
Other questions? All right. Jason, you're up.
I don't kind of hand this off to you maybe David, but really we're kind of at that point now for the board to discuss really what it wants to do. We provided you kind of some of the, the financial attachments to the mid-year budget item two to kind of see generally what kind of revenues we have coming in and project prioritization. But for the Northwest Triangle area, really kind of for now, we need to know the design in which we got to get our engineers designing for next year and what that scope of work is going to be. If it's not this project, then we have other projects. But typically the board kind of awards its design engineering in the fall. But I think we want to do it a little sooner because this is the first time really we're doing, potentially doing sanitary sewer main and water main. It's a significant project. So as we kind of show for that $5.1 million kind of total project reconstruction, as well as everything else, which is in talking with kind of the Finance Planning Committee with Cheryl and Deena, that's kind of where they were leaning for a number of reasons that I think probably resonate with, with you all too on. It just probably makes sense to, to do it right now versus trying to do half now and then hopefully hope for the best and not have to go back and kind of tear up what you did do. So we'd be looking at really then prioritizing this project. So whatever was planned for next year would get pushed back to the following year or really will be reevaluated as part of the facility plan for waste, for storm, or sorry, for wastewater and water. So we'll probably be going back and just reshuffling the deck to really come up with a new five-year plan if you move forward with starting work on that. So we'd be looking at normally budgeting around $1.4 million for next year for water main and lead service line replacement. I think right now it's Glen Lake East or Glen, yeah, Glen Lake East and then some, some other lead lines. So we'd be reallocating that money towards this project. So now really your difference is between 1.4 million and 5.1. So now you're really looking at the 3.7 million gap. You then potentially put $500,000 towards that from the street improvement program to cover the reconstruction costs. You're now down to 3.2 million. Tom shaking his head yes. So now you're down to a, you know, a delta 3.2 million kind of funding gap to complete this project next year. We have, you know, there's options. I think we staff would need to go back and kind of bring forth some of those to you, but there is no free money. There's no free revenue. So we would have to be coming back to you with allocating existing revenue in a different way. We may want to show you different C I S in some of the outer years just for illustrative purposes. Because I think it's important to, to see what that would look like. We would look at Home Rule Sales Tax, right? And how that is being, what projects that would be prioritized. If this were to say this is project number one, then we'd have to reflect maybe using more Home Rule Sales Tax. So that's kind of really what we're wanting to know from you here is what your top option is. Then we'll come back at a future meeting and kind of lay out some funding scenarios for you.
Can we go back to the option slide just for everyone's context to make this conversation a little bit easier? Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you. So I need, I guess I'll start with Cheryl and Deena because I know you guys had some more in-depth conversations with staff. Do you guys want to add any additional comments or color?
Reason we were leaning towards the 5.1, besides the fact that the reallocation of those programs. But the big thing, what, what I was feeling was I didn't want to do half of the project and then have to go back and tear up what we did to redo it when the next thing fails. To me, it made more sense to invest fully in the, in the correcting the situation all the way instead of doing it 50% now and then the cost being higher later to be doing more, tearing up what we already did.
Yep. That's exactly what we were discussing in our meetings.
So any thoughts or comments from the board about the four options in front of us? And I think again, to be clear, this is for engineer study purpose only. We'll have a whole other conversation about how we finance it. And I think also I would, maybe I don't want to make an assumption. If the board were to say, let's engineer the whole thing, if situations change, we could obviously say, okay, we're only going to move forward with these elements of the project. As long as it's designed, we can always opt out, but it's harder to opt in after the design work is done. Is that correct? Okay. Like everything else, there's a lot of exit ramps potentially during projects as we get new information. So I just want to put that out there. So any thoughts from?
I'm, I'm totally fine with the 5.1. I do have one question for Tom. With some of the bonds maturing this year. With some of the bonds maturing this year and next year, can we bond any of this?
Boy, your eyes perked up there.
Yes, that is actually one of the first things I looked at. I talked to Spear, our, our bond counselor, our bond advisor to get what the bond would be, you know, what, what the cost would be for different dollar amounts for this project? If we did the whole thing, we did part of it. So that was one of the first things that's the, I have that in hand.
Sorry to steal your thunder.
No, but I am waiting for other information. And I also got information from our, our bank too. But also we, we put in for federal loan programs too. So I'm waiting for that to see what they would offer us as well as possible. Yep.
Thanks.
Yep, Cheryl.
I think also the five-year plan is not to the end yet. We're not at the end of our five-year plan, but I think it's time for us to get together and relook at that five-year plan and see if we have to think of it a little bit differently. And so I'm suggesting that we set time to do that sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I think that's a fantastic suggestion. So, and that's the strategic plan, I assume is what you're referring to, correct? So Tom, Lee and Wayne, any thoughts on the options in front of us right now? Or any questions you have that come up, Lee?
Yeah, just have a question on, can you go back to the infrastructure?
This one?
Yeah. That last bullet point, so this says that there's 3 million more that we'll have available to use for other things, right? Because it sounded like it was opposite during the presentation. So that's why I just wanted clarity on that bullet point.
I'll speak to this.
And if we want to pull up the.
So when we, so this was actually referring to the CIP that we had last year. The, we had the Devlin loans starting earlier. Now that we are not going to get that Devlin loan when we thought we were, plus Bottomman is starting six months later than we expected. We'll have one year, which is about $3 million of loan payments that we will not be making that we had planned for. So then that freed up $3 million to either for, you know, projects in 2028 for the wastewater and wastewater or for our general capital, which would be streets or any other project or stormwater.
So to, to tie those two together though, given the timing of when that additional revenue is technically not earmarked for the original intended purpose and the timeline of this project, that could be a case where we could take out short-term debt that would be paid back by revenue realized at a later date that wasn't earmarked and not, that money's not necessarily available unless we push this project out till 2028 though, correct?
It's correct. So that's a good point. The, you know, like the bank loan, that would be one that we can pay back at any time. The bonds are a little bit harder because that would be 10 years before they would, before they would be callable. But for a loan, yeah, we can borrow now and then in, you know, in a couple of years we got, we have the 3 million. We can use that to pay off that.
Got it, yeah. And to your point, so yeah, so you need to wait until 2028 to use this money. But to your point though, which I think is where you're going like.
You got a gap of 3.2 million and it's like, it's only 200,000.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I'm good with the 5.1 option.
I mean, we go back to the main site again, Ryan, sorry, thank you, but go on.
Yeah, I don't want to like just do half of this. Like Cheryl was saying, I think it.
Wayne and Tom P.
Good with 5.1.
Okay.
Because I, same thing with Cheryl was saying, let's not do it twice. And you know, it's stuff from 1920, got to be replaced. And aren't there some properties there that are unincorporated that might come into the village too?
Well, that's a whole other conversation, but not in this area of that area.
Any of this is happening in front of, and of homes that are unincorporated, no.
So I think Steph has direction on that piece of it. So I, I think one thing I would just add in, we can kind of figure out what the right forum is for this. But to your point, Wayne, and to Cheryl's point, there's a lot of aging lines out there. And so I think if we're going to discuss how we finance the 3.2 million gap that we have, I think we might want to consider what's the holistic picture of what we're trying to solve. So I think it might be interesting when we're looking at the funding options, what are ways to leverage that for not just this project, but for, you know, what's the next block radius? We're going to have six water main breaks in the matter of, you know, 30 days, right? So I think this is something that we can solve in a vacuum, but my concern is we cannot solve this problem three back-to-back years in a vacuum. That's going to have exponential issues. And so if we're looking at options like bonds that have a little bit more of a rigid payment structure, is that a case where we borrow more than just the case for this project? But we actually have like a little bit more of a bigger plan there to allocate those revenues against that. So I think however we want to figure out how we can surface that. But that's kind of the whole point of the capital budget conversation, but I think we might need to expedite some of that so we can, when we discuss funding, we can maybe look at it not just in this project context, but the broader, would just be my ask. So especially if we're talking about debt, I think that's, debt can be leveraged appropriately if done correctly. And if we're going to do that, I think it's beyond this project. It needs to be more holistic. I, I will just put in my personal opinions. I think debt for just this project makes me a little bit nervous if we're doing that for a series of projects and that suddenly is a little bit more worthwhile in my opinion. So, but that's just my opinion. The board can differ, so. So does that help Steph on the direction you required on this one before I pontificated?
Yep, we have what we need in order to come back to kind of continue to refine how you're going to pay for it. And then also we'll provide a more macro perspective too, knowing that this is just one part of town where there's 100-year-old water and sewer main underground. So. All right, so that's that one.
Oh, we got more.
Yep, so wastewater and water facility plans, typically these are done every five years and you're kind of coming up on your five years. And these are those plans that help set up your prioritization typically of what needs to be improved in wastewater and water. So from a water, I envision like the work you're recommending we move forward with now was not in our priority for the last five years. But likely through this plan exercise, it would rise to the top based on break history and age of pipe and that. So this is what we typically do every five years. We just want to get it going sooner so that we can have it in time for the 2027 budget because it takes about a year. So Karen, I think there's, each study is roughly $100,000. We also need this in order, this plan is necessary to try to get state funding, low interest loans. They require these plans be submitted and filed by communities. So it's something that we always just have to do every five years. So it's not in this year's budget to start them. It would have been in next year's budget, but we kind of wanted to start this six months earlier. So we have it in time for appropriate planning.
Any objection from the board on that recommendation? All right, see none.
SIP funding level then maybe, Brian, I don't know if you want to pull up that map again on road condition or not. But so typically you're doing the 1.25. That's kind of our annual program. We, we show, albeit some of this, you know, you don't want to double count some of this money because we show unallocated home rule sales tax available for street resurfacing, but we also show it for the 5.1 million dollar project. So is there a desired target of funding other than the 1.25 million that you want us to kind of develop more of a five-year program around?
What's the feedback from the board on what target you'd like to see reflected for consideration? Again, I think we can always walk it back, but if we want to put together a more comprehensive list, what, what is the board comfortable with trying? And to me, I think it's a difference of, do you want to be? I would, I, I will, I'm going to say we are not able to continue current funding level. So it's a matter of, do you want to get this resolved in eight years, six years or five years?
Five years.
Five years, okay. Dina?
Okay.
Okay. Five. Tom P, Cheryl and Lee, where are you guys leaning?
I think it's just like anything, there's trade-offs. I mean, like the 5.1 that we're looking at, and I guess it depends on, you know, I mean, I'd like to get it solved in one year. But I mean, like, you know, just depending on where all the, the money comes from. So I think to me, like you said, I think we need to up it. But just depending where we kind of close the gap on the, the difference in the 3, $3 million. To me, that's just like an unknown to really give a good answer right now.
So are we comfortable, hearing that feedback, are we comfortable maybe giving a range of between the?
Blue and the purple?
Two, yeah, the 2.25 and the 2.5.
That is, I was, I was looking at.
In a vacuum, yes, but in, in the, the, on the table of everything, right? Like it's, it's difficult to say. Or were you looking at the two? Sorry, Cheryl.
Just looking between the purple and the blue line and seeing where the, we enter into that 6. Number of the condition of the road. So I was leaning more towards the six-year.
And Tom P?
Yep.
The 2.25 and two and a half.
Okay, so I think we'll, we'll stick with the purple and the green then as far as like our range for you guys to look at. And I think understanding what that difference looks like from a revenue perspective would be helpful.
Okay.
So.
We have the direction on that, Tom. So the STP project, that's that Lawrence resurfacing, it's the one we got to submit kind of our intent by December this year. That's that federal, primarily federally funded, I don't know if it's 75%, 70, 30 split. So we pay 30%. In order to do that, we need about $100,000 engineering contract to do that traffic study and all the other necessary paperwork to submit that in December. So looking for direction from the board, whether or not we can get that in front of you for award.
What's the board's thoughts on that?
Don't it just kind of stalls right now, right?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, I mean, really right now, and this is, to me, this is in furtherance of trying to get to your mark target too, right? Like if you want to get to two and a half million dollars a year.
Two ways to do it. We either find the revenue or we find grant opportunities to get us up to.
Every 30 cents, you're getting a dollar worth of roads done, right?
Right.
So.
Have to do it.
And I think it's, and I, our recommendation would be probably then in maybe two more years in 2027, go after the Bryn Mawr one, but right now let's try this Lawrence Avenue.
Is there, and that was going to be one of my questions. What's, what was the prioritization decision for Lawrence over Bryn Mawr and kind of why? Okay. Thank you. I think I, we have 75 miles of road, but we have 91 miles of water mains or sewage. One of those is like in the eighties or nineties, so.
It's really probably cubic. I mean, the, the square yards is really the calculation because.
Some of them are small.
Inches wide or, you know, 80 feet wide, right?
So it sounds like there's some consensus to move forward on the engineering for Lawrence to help position us for grant funding. Is that the case? Is that what I'm seeing? Okay, so Steph has direction on that, so.
Yep. Then the pause in the police and fire building improvements in this year's budget. In lieu, we would like to retain, go out and try to find an architect to kind of do an assessment analysis. We have a cost less than 100,000. We're pretty confident, probably four to five months. We would come back to it kind of a scope and kind of give you an idea of what we're thinking when it comes to assessment, but it'd really be Village Hall, Police and Fire Station, kind of looking at the current conditions, functionality, kind of space needs, particularly in the fire department and kind of help us really prioritize. I think as we've worked through some internal conversations, every department or every, those three buildings, we all kind of are thinking the same thing. And we need, I believe, we need kind of a, an assessment in order to help drive where we should be prioritizing our spend.
With the architect fee estimate we have, what's the net difference between what the proposed building improvements were?
So fire or sorry, police department, I think we had 40,000 in there. And then so fire, we had 45,000, albeit bids are 200,000 for a kitchen remodel.
Less than what we would have been spending. I mean, we're not getting anything necessarily, but.
I'm optim, I'm hopeful that the $85,000 total for those two projects that we have in this CIP, that we can get the study done for at least that, if not less.
And I think just to add to color, I know from the conversations that I've had on this topic, a lot of the different departments have similar needs. And instead of us having redundant three different things designed and built for every department, could we have one big thing built once for everyone to share? So I think it's kind of, is there an opportunity to consolidate and/or leverage our space a little bit more holistically? Or at least help us understand what the shortcomings are and are we, we investing in buildings that are not going to be able to sustain the needs in the future? So I think it's, I don't, I'm, I'm, it's either going to be a really scary report or it's going to be really enlightening and helpful. So I think, but there's something that needs to be done more strategic versus kind of just continue to chase project after project. So I'll just add my two cents on that one. So we may, we may not like the results or the outcomes of it, but it may, it will help us understand it for spending money in a good way. I will say that, so. Are there any other questions or thoughts on that study? Does he intend to bring a contract to the board for this?
Yeah, I mean, if you're uncertain because you don't have enough information presented to you tonight, we can come back to it, just kind of a general scope and give a little more context to, to what we're talking about.
I mean, I, I didn't mean to cut you off. It sounded like you had a thought there.
Not on roads.
Okay.
I'm back on streets and.
Okay. All right. Any objection to at least holding it? And then we'll have a, a contract before the board later to discuss and we can probably have some more in-depth conversations there. But it sounds like the board's fine with that.
That's fine.
Well, yeah, I don't know what.
And I don't know the scope of it.
Yeah, well, I mean, bunch of stuff, I don't know between police, fire and here, internal work of, I mean, we knocked down some walls here, that kind of stuff. I think for Village Hall, it's looking at the second floor, including this space, which we've not done anything with, right? We've intentionally not really touched the second floor structurally. Fire, there hasn't, there's been a lot of asks for redoing downstairs basement. We've done some bathroom changes there which had to be done internally. But I think now that we're at the point where we're talking a kitchen and looking at the bedroom space and how our employees are sleeping in there, it, to me, it's like, it's gotten bigger. And tech, you know, that warrants a step back. And police, we've, I think what's in the budgets like paint and flooring. I mean, that's really all we've done over there because their remodel was 2006, their most recent one. But roofs and that kind of stuff, you know, we've done. But really internally, other than Public Works, which we wouldn't include as part of this, has been the major internal kind of gut.
Thank you. Census to bring us some more information and a contract and we can kind of have, I would, I would say bring them both.
Hope a word.
Or yes, if we've got good questions, why not? We can probably handle that and administratively make those changes. But I'd rather we have a whole package that the board can discuss and also approve if needed, so, but.
Thank you. Stormwater construction, I think we'll just probably, this will come to fruition just by working through how you're going to pay for water and sewer and streets. I mean, this is again, one of those large project line items that doesn't have adequate revenue right now for stormwater. I think apart from our one that we're trying to accomplish as part of the kind of proposed Lexington development, that Meacham Creek West, as Kristen called it, or the Heather Green Detention Pond, we're hoping we can try to leverage TIF 100% to do that one. Otherwise it's, you know, we're considering through the design phase, but eventually we'll need to decide we're going to try to pursue construction. And if so, how?
I think one thing, since this one, we're not, we don't really have direction that you're asking the board on this one. I think it would be helpful for us to know what do other communities do to fund their stormwater projects, right? Whether it's they just do it solely from grant funding, they have a special fee or they levy, you know, they use their other fees or taxes to cover it. I think that would be helpful for us to know as maybe like a prelude to the broader conversation. Because I think we don't do anything official today, so it's kind of hard to give direction on anything if we don't know what other communities are doing. So, and that might help then for the policy outcome that you guys kind of shape.
Okay.
Is anyone else have any wants or asks for more clarity on the stormwater side before we have anything in front of us? Okay.
And then kind of the two final things, which I can do this within my own purchasing authority, but to take advantage of tonight's meeting, as you recall, in order through the proposed budget process to the final budget, there were a number of items we removed from the general fund. I kind of provided that in your memo. Going back to staff, asked him, is there anything that was taken out that, you know, showing that right now revenues exceed expenditures? These are the two items at staff, the additional two truck scales and police. I think they have two currently. They're borrowing two occasionally, maybe from another department to get four. But ideally we want these four in house, most vehicles have four wheels. So at a minimum, so you can put scales under all the wheels instead of having to move it around. It's just more efficient for staff. And then the weather monitoring, which was Public Works. So the scales are 10 grand, the monitoring, they're starting to introduce technology for our street and ice control program. So Karen and Public Works are looking to get kind of two weather stations that we can deploy in town that'll take in data around moisture, temperature, snow. That'll take in data around moisture, temperature, snowfall, uh, to aid our response and evaluation of when crews should come in to start treating streets. So, um, that was something that we liked to get done so that we can maybe get it in this winter. So we can evaluate it and determine other additional sort of, um, technologies we could leverage like snow tracking and a couple of other things. But we'd like to first start here. Um, so that's kind of the recommendation that if you're good with this, I'd like to move forward with authorizing these.
Any objection from the board on these two items?
No.
All right. Yeah, absolutely.
Other monitoring, is that just like equipment or is there a subscription to it or is it just?
I believe there's service. I can get you a little more detail. Do you have it in front of you? Okay, sorry. But from my understanding, it was equipment plus some sort of service that provided access to it and data.
Yeah, we, we, this would allow us to actually remote into it and has notifications as well. Um, other communities surrounding us utilize it. So we've actually been able to test and look at the information it provides, um, for us, but it's a whole, all done internet-based.
And then what's the cost, like the difference between just like the actual unit and?
Ongoing maintenance cost?
Yeah, like ongoing subscription fees of the six.
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can provide that.
Sorry. We'll bring that back before I move forward with anything of that, if that's what the board would like.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. All right.
Any other questions or thoughts on those? Yes, Wayne?
So I'm back on roads again.
Uh, then hold on. So I think we're good on those general fund, correct?
Yes.
All right. Then we'll open up for any final questions or thoughts.
I just want to put it in the right perspective for me. A million dollars a year gets the roads repaired every nineteen and a half years. So that's kind of at the rate they're deteriorating. So I, I want us to at least know that we should be spending two million dollars a year just to stay even. And we always have been at a deficit.
Yes.
At the money we're spending right now, it takes thirty-two years.
Yep.
Do a road.
Mm-hmm.
So look at just with a little bit more money, how much more efficiently we would get.
And since home rule, we did increase the funding to the streets program. I mean modestly, but, um, we need to be very intentional about it. So you make a very good point on that end. So, trust you, Prokowsky.
This is, I guess, a question just kind of thrown out there. I'm not necessarily looking for an answer, but just something to think about. Um, with the kind of economy of scales that go with, it's a little bit cheaper, the more we, miles we do in any given year. With the financing options though, to get that increased funding, do you think that we'd basically lose those savings though with the interest we'd be paying on potentially financing it? Or is this something that you think we could maintain? Again, I'm just kind of throwing that out there for people to.
Good for thought.
Think about.
Sure. Right. I, I understand the question. Don't know if we have. Okay.
Um, so basically, um, the more we spend each year, we get the economy of scale. So if like we're spending two and a half million dollars a year, uh, it's only five hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and three dollars per mile. But at two million, it's five hundred and twenty thousand. So you got a few thousand dollars there. But with the financing options, if we have to take out some sort of interest, are we going, just going to lose that savings anyway? And how would that kind of play into all of this?
Yeah, understood. Um, so I wouldn't be looking to borrow for streets because that's almost an operational cost. We want to do that every year. I'd have to be borrowing all the time. So this is really being able to utilize, how much of our home rule sales tax do we want to utilize on streets? And so we actually put this together. I, we had it in a document I think we gave to the finance planning and then we kind of took it out just because we wanted to show if we, we're not adding anything, you know, we're, we're seeking direction. So we, we could actually with home rule sales tax, knock on wood, the, you know, the projections are sound that we could add this and increase it to two million next year and then two and a quarter million the year, the years after that, keeping that pace and not having to borrow.
Okay. So basically the economy of scale savings are going to be savings if we decide to do this. And then we also get to our goals faster.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much. I know mid-year it can be a, uh, very, uh, heavy lift. So I think we covered a lot of very important and impactful topics for the village. And I think we covered it, um, very well. So I just appreciate Steph's time in that. And I think we've got some good direction, some good questions that we put out there that will help shape those future conversations. So thank you again. Uh, that is our only new business item, and that took quite a bit of time. So I think we're all relieved by that. Um, is, we do have a second up for Village Board Public Comment. Is there a member of the public that wishes to address the board at this time? But the record show none. Is there any other business for discussion only?
Taste Roselle.
We've got the, well, I, I think there's a all slew of stuff. So we got to congratulate our first wedding at Petal, uh, porch over the weekend. So it was a hot day, but they had a very good time. And so it was really exciting to see, um, the conceptual plan that we had put out there actually come to reality and, and actually turn into a wedding venue, which is kind of a, a shock to me this quickly, but that turned out to be a really fantastic thing. We obviously have the Taste Roselle coming up, so we're excited to see that this Friday, August first through Sunday, August third. So there'll be a lot of exciting things and it'll look a little different this year. I know, um, change can always, um, put a burr in people's pants, so to speak, on that kind of stuff. But, uh, you know, I think it'll be a, a fantastic time for everyone to gathers community. Um, and then just embrace the new space and see what that can do for the community in that regard. So, um, so yeah, a lot of exciting things going on.
With the board on Saturday too.
And coffee with the board on Saturday too. It's a fun-filled day. So thank you for reminding me that. We coffee, join us for, right here at village hall before to the Taste Roselle at, at ten AM. So you can have your pastries, donuts and coffee or tea, uh, with us, ask any questions in a nice and formal setting. And, uh, then go out to lunch at the taste. So a lot of fun events going on. So absolutely. Any other events I'm forgetting about, guys? Uh, I have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.